Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Chamber Government Affairs Debate for the 3rd District. We've done a coin flip to determine who would go first, and I won't skip the intros this time like I did last time. And so the coin toss went to Supervisor Holmes, and he'll be speaking first. But just before we start that, I thought I'd mention that the Government Affairs Team has seven members. We have some of them here. Bill Redakiewicz is here, Rich Johnson is here, Monique Hall, Randy Wagner, and then Chuck Heiselman, Kathy Asbury are also on that team with me. And we run an endorsement process, and the endorsement is not about all policies with respect to the candidates, but rather their business friendliness. Because we're a representative of the business community, we're looking at how they support business activities. And our results are either a thumbs up, as they're good for business, a neutral, we don't really have an opinion about it, or negative, that they're not good for business. And so that's what you'll see coming out in just a few days after we complete our interviews, which is the 3rd part of this process. Each of the candidates has filed a response to a questionnaire that we sent out regarding issues that are of interest to the business community, and we take all those three things together and come up with an analysis. Let me give you the ground rules. Actually, before I go to ground rules, I'm just going to mention one thing, because I'm sure you've not heard this yet. Today is the big day of giving, right? Okay. How many Leadership Auburn grads do we have in the room? Thanks. Well, just reminding you that the Leadership Auburn is brought to you by the foundation of the Chamber, and it is a nonprofit deductible expense, so in your big day of giving, think about the Chamber Foundation, please. Okay. The ground rules are that there's a two-minute opening, one-minute closing, and this week we're going to do something a little different from last week based on the feedback that we received. We're going to give each candidate one minute to respond to a question, and then we're going to give each candidate 30 seconds to rebut the other candidate. So it extends a little bit. I think it'll get a little more interesting in that way, and we'll see how that goes. And it is a debate. I don't know if you've ever looked in the dictionary, but it means that there is interaction between the candidates, and that we're intending to have that happen. But we're not necessarily intending to take our cue from the presidential debates. No fisticuffs in this room, anyway. We agreed on that? Yeah, okay. Steve Galler is going to be our timer this morning, and general rules to decorum, that is, you know, no fisticuffs are going to apply. You have an opportunity to ask questions, and in the back of the room are three mini legal pads instead of three or five cards, and you can write your innocent pens, write your question on that, and Kathleen Schaefer, you want to put up your hand? Or Monique? Either one will be collecting those questions and then forwarding up here, and we'll just go through each of those. So with no further ado, let's have Supervisor Holmes give his opening.
Thank you for putting this forum together. I think it's important to get the word out to the community about what's going on in Placer County. I want to talk about what's been done since I took office in 2005. We've had balanced budgets every year. Those budgets have included, those budgets have included carryover funds anywhere from $25 million to $32 million every year. Those are spent funds that go back into our next year's budget. The county has built up reserves of more than $18 million during that time, and that's what got us through the economic downturn. We were able to use up those reserves, and during that time, we laid off less than 25 When I took office in 2005, the county had not addressed the unfunded liability of $328 million for retiree health care. We put a program together that placed those funds in a cow's purse trust that the county cannot touch and that the state cannot touch. Today, that fund is 74 percent funded, and we should have that completely funded in the next 12 to 15 years. And from that time on, those benefits will be paid out of that trust with no extra county Since 2005, the county has built new facilities, including the Community Development Resource Agency in North Auburn, the Auburn Justice Center, and the South Placer Adult Correction Facility. Those buildings are all paid for without borrowing tiny money. On that? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robert Griegas. I'm your candidate for Placer County Supervisor District 3. Thank you for having me here this morning. I've been looking forward to this. I think there's two criteria when you're looking for a candidate. First of all, is he qualified to do the job? In my case, yes. I have over 20 years in the corporate environment, 15 years in the business investment environment, including international business. The second criteria is, does he reflect your personal view of what good governance should be? Does his principles match your principles? So hopefully today, through this debate, you will understand that. It's more than just today's issues, because there will be new issues every time. So let's get started with, what am I for? Not what I've done, but what am I for? What are we going to do in the future? For the State of Jefferson? For sharing Prop 172 tax dollars with the fire districts? I am for repairing our aging roads and infrastructure. I am for improving our water situation and storage. I am for concealed carry shall issue, and I'm also for the reducing the regulations and improving our business environment here in Placer County. I also look at government as not an agency to do something to create business, but an agency to facilitate and step out of the way and let businesses do their job. Thank you very much.
I think we have the answer to the first question, but I'll ask it anyway. It'll give you a chance to expound upon it. What is your position on the State of Jefferson and why? Your first question is a Jim.
Well, I don't think the State of Jefferson is a very good idea for Placer County. There are some counties in the north that want to do that, that's fine. But if you took the idea to a vote of the people in Placer County, there's no way in the world that it would pass. That's all I'm saying about that.
I am a strong proponent of the State of Jefferson. I've done the business analysis. I've looked at it. It works. Financially, it works. If you take Placer, Eldorado County, north to the Oregon border, Nevada, over to the coast, we have, depending on where you draw the line, somewhere between six and nine representatives in Sacramento. Do you think they listen to us? The answer is no. I frame this as an urban versus rural approach. We in the rural areas, and that includes Roseville and Auburn and other areas of Placer County that are suburban, have a different view and a different opinion and a different approach to governance than what they have. We do not have representation in the State House. We will not have representation under the current structure. Jefferson will solve that problem. It will give us the opportunity to free ourselves from Sacramento's regulations. It will give us an opportunity to become more affluent, become the state and the liberty and reclaim our liberties that we have today.
Supervisor Holmes, you've got the 30-second rebuttal opportunity.
Well, regardless of the State of Jefferson is formed, they still have to conform with the Federal Endangered Species Act, the Federal Clean Water Act, the Federal Clean Air Act, and several others. Other acts, so they still will be under the thumb of the federal government, and they have to do their business under those rules.
Mr. Griegas, 30 seconds.
That would be awesome, but we also have California versions of the same federal agencies doing the additional regulation that we can shed. We don't need the California EPA and those kinds of things in a new state, because we will have to conform, as Jim said, with the federal rules. The more important thing is, we will be able to be represented. You will be able to go to your representatives locally and get better answers. You go to the State House today, generally, they don't listen to you.
Next question. What role is ahead for the county and a post-World War II senior facility? Mr. Griegas?
I apologize. Can you rephrase that question?
Sure. What role is ahead for the county and a post-World War II senior facility? So is there something that's going to be created that's post-World War II? In other words, something more modern than what we currently have?
If I understand the question correctly, what are we going to do with our seniors after, in this new environment? And I think that's an answer that is not government-related. It is related to the individuals, and...
Supervisor Holmes?
You know, that's what I've been working on. The idea of a senior center now is outmoded. I'm working on a multi-generational community center concept out in North Auburn. It has been, we have been working with the city of Auburn, with the Boys and Girls Club, the high school district, the grammar school district. We've been working with the Airport Land Use Commission in order to make sure that the facility we have in mind is at Mark Site Church, which is very underutilized. It's got 55,000 square feet, and only about 15 percent of that is used, and that's basically on Fridays and Sundays. And so the concept is to bring the community together, to work with the city, to work with the Boys and Girls Club, the high school, grammar school, Auburn Recreation District, to bring together a community center where all of those resources can be worked together. Work together.
You have a third second?
I think bringing people together is an excellent idea. However, it is not government's role to be a partnership in that. It is government's role to be, use our bully pulpit as leadership and not spend our tax dollars there. So that would be the difference.
And Supervisor Holmes, 30 seconds. Rebuttal for you.
Well, being on this post-World War II environment, it's, we have to have partnerships. We have to have partnerships with our other jurisdictions. That's what we're doing. And we have to have partnerships with the nonprofits in the area. We have to all work together in order to make this community a resourceful and helpful community.
All right. Our next question is, how do you feel about annexation? And as Cheryl Mackey reminded me last time, it is a county issue. Jim, I believe you're up on that.
Oh, I don't think that'll ever happen. They tried that, it was an advisory vote back in the early 90s. It was interesting to see how that rolled out. I have to say that the Placer County Sheriff was really, really engaged in that. I'm in North Auburn, where I have worked and lived. He had horse patrols, bicycle patrols, foot patrols. The sheriff certainly doesn't want to see annexation. And I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to do that, because it's going to be, the tax sharing agreement is going to be a long process trying to work that out. And I don't believe, if it went to the vote of the people, the people in North Auburn certainly would not support that, and I know I did.
Well, I think we agree on that one, Jim. The people do not want to be annexed. I've talked to several folks in that area, and that is not something that they're interested in. And to force that on them or to take the government role and say, "Let's do that," is not a good position. We need to follow what the majority of people want.
Rebuttal for Jim?
Oh, no, I agree.
Run, say hey.
Okay, good. All right. All right. Do you support the Placer High School District Proposition C bond issue? Mr. Griegas, I believe you're up.
This is the 100 and some million dollars?
135 million dollars, as I recall.
The answer to that question is absolutely not. That is a tax increase. We do not have the bonding capacity to do that today. At best, we can do only about 30 million of that. So what we're doing is we're borrowing the money down the road for our children and letting our children pay it off when they're my age. Okay? That's not a good plan. And in fact, the government, the state, has even said that should be an illegal process. We should not be allowed to do that. So in this particular case, the way this bond is structured, no. The second thing is, you're borrowing money for technology as one of the issues in there. Okay, I don't know who's got a computer lately, but you all know they go out of style, they go out of fashion. Within four to five years, have you got a 30-year bond on it? That's like getting a 30-year, 35-year loan on a car, a used car, that you're going to have for five or 10 years. It doesn't make good sense. It's not a good bond issue, and we should not do it.
Are you support Measure C for the high school district?
You know, I formed the Placer County Youth Commission. We have a lot of talented young people that invest in their education. My brother Mike serves on the committee that does the interviews for the military academies. Those young people invest in their education. As people, we need to invest in their facilities to make sure that they have the best facilities to do the best they can to be part of our future government and future leaders. They're very talented people. I know you see some people, young people out there that get bad press, but if you look hard, you will see a lot of good young people that are working hard to invest in their future by investing in themselves.
Investment implies a good ROI or return on investment. This is not a good return on investment. So this is not an investment, but more of a raising your taxes kind of approach. Now, I'm for investing in our children. I am for giving the best tools available. But the best facilities, the best physical buildings do not create a good educational environment. It's the people. It's the teachers, it's the students, it's the parents actively involved and engaged. And my children went to the oral role. Time? 30 seconds. Great school.
Oh, man. These buildings were built, many of those buildings were built back more than 50 years ago. Times have changed. There's new technology that, there's new wiring to access that technology. The Eurocrab Gym, which is Auburn's, one of Auburn's most important gathering places, was, has not been renovated in more than 50 years. Those are the kinds of things that bring community together, and that's what we need to do. We need to invest in that.
Okay. Should the homeless shelter in Placer County be permanent? Jim, I think there's some goes to do.
No, it's supposed to be a temporary homeless shelter. And I don't know how long temporary is, but so far, it's been more than a year. Today, at our Board of Supervisors meeting, we're going to be asked to invest almost a half a million dollars in just for the next 10 months. I think that there's a better approach to the managing homelessness. I think the Board of Supervisors has gone in the wrong direction in this. They've spent, again, will be spending almost a half a million dollars, and there's really no plan in place. So as soon as I see a plan that is workable, then I'll be glad to support a homeless shelter. Permanently, it's going to take a long, long time to find the right place, to find out how we're going to buy the property, and who's going to pay for building it, and who's going to pay for the sustainability of running it over the many years.
Agreed. It should be temporary. Disagree. They've had a year and a half to figure out how to get them out of that park over there next to the county buildings. In another 10 months, as to what they're going to do, and they have no plan? Really? Let's get it done. There are ways to do this. There are best practices out there. Jim says we have about a half a million we're investing. Let's take a closer look at that number. It's actually 1.7 billion, because the Sheriff Department is asking 1.2 for additional policing just for the homeless. There are best practices. You go look at Oregon and see what they're doing. They have a program called Homeward Bound. You go look at Utah, they have other programs that include a work process with each, with the part of the thing. And I hope somebody asks a question about the vets, because I would love to talk about the vets for a few minutes. We'll keep that separate. We owe them a life. So point being, we've had lots of time. We're not getting it done. It's time to get it done. Lock the people in the room if necessary. Let's do some waterfall or iterative approach. We're going to do this. Huh?
We're not going to solve homelessness. We have to manage homelessness. And of course, the sheriff is going to want more deputies to manage the population that has increased in Placer County since that shelter's been open. And I live out there, and you, I know that there's more people coming, that they know that there's a shelter there. So they come up and they're, if you look at our businesses, we've got security guards in all of our businesses.
The principle with homeless is, we will always have the poor among us. We need to... Something given for nothing is not appreciated. I have, homeless people work for me before, and they appreciate the ability to have a job and get to work. And we need to do something different. And standing around saying, "Let's talk about this some more. Let's figure out something different," doesn't get the job done. I am a proponent of getting it done.
We need to invest in affordable housing. We need to invest for our mentally ill, that they're very underfunded, mentally ill. I'm working with HAMI, the Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing, to bring more housing so people that learn to live on their own, that suffer from mental illness. We need to have more affordable housing for our seniors. We, I'm on the board of the Gathering Inn. There's two ladies that go to the Gathering Inn that are in their 70s, and they can't afford to live in an apartment, because it's just too darn expensive.
What is your stand on term limits?
Who gets to go first one out?
I'm not a proponent of term limits, particularly in local government. If you look at, over the years, there's been several supervisors that have only served one term. Since, going back to the 1990s, I know there's at least five supervisors that weren't re-elected, and it's because the people didn't think they were doing the job. And so it doesn't make sense, if you have someone that's doing the job, to turn them out. You can see what happens in Eldorado County. That's what they have, they have term limits. So you get a good supervisor in there, after two terms, they're gone, and then someone else has to pick up. It's not a good way to run government consistently.
It's very interesting, Jim should say that. As a leadership role in our community and county, I would look to George Washington and what his vision on that was. Because George Washington could have been president for life, and he said, "It's not good for the country." Having someone in office for a long period of time is not good for the country. It's time for a fresh look, a fresh vision. It's time to make the changes. Now, should it be legally required? No. Is it a moral issue? I believe it is a moral issue, that you should look to yourself and say, "No longer than." And for me, I've already promised no more than two terms. So if you vote for me, if you put me in office, I won't be there longer than two terms, because I believe fervently, term limits are a good thing at certain levels, and a county supervisor, that is one, that should be self-constrained, if nothing else.
Placer County's been well governed over the last several years. They've had quality people in office that have made good, sound financial decisions, and have made good, sound decisions regarding our environment and regarding our development and our business growth. And they have a wealth of knowledge about the issues. The state is always changing the plans. You've got to shift and learn more about what the state is requiring. You need some consistency in government, and that's part of the problem with homelessness. The state and federal government have never been consistent in approach to homelessness.
It's time for a change. Jim, you've had 12 years, 14 years, you're asking for 16. We need somebody with more energy, somebody that's not going to let that homeless issue drag on for a year, two years, three years. Someone that's going to get in there, find the plans, work hard, and get it done.
This is a business organization presentation, so how about a few business questions? Job creation and job retention are important for a healthy economy. What role do you see the county taking to achieve this goal? Mr. Griegas?
I'm glad you asked that one. The county does not create jobs. If you think they do, then let's everybody start working for the county and see if that works. The answer is, it doesn't. What the county does is a facilitator. It allows business, let me rephrase that. It should be stepping out of the way so the business can do its job well. It needs to facilitate whatever process is there that is not handled in the private sector. Let's take a look, for example, at commercial real estate development. Should the county be in that particular business? If you think it's a good idea, then let's use it as in, let's use the county's eminent domain, take up all the commercial real estate, and we'll be real estate developers. I don't think that's a good thing. I think it needs to step out of the way and let the commercial real estate developers in a competitive environment provide us with better products at a lower cost.
If you don't have to look very far to see job creation, all you have to do is drive out Highway 49 and see all the new businesses out there. We've got Ulta, which my wife likes to go to. We've got several new restaurants, Smart and Vinyl. And then the county is also working in the Sunset Industrial Area to do, bring a plan together to create good-paying jobs, to attract businesses, to build businesses in manufacturing in order to bring good-paying jobs to the community, to the county. The blessing for Auburn is, a lot of people will want to live up here in Auburn, in North Auburn, and they will be able to purchase a house up here, drive to Roseville, Rockland area, and have a quality job. That's what we're working on.
I think Jim said it right. The businesses create the jobs, not the county. What the county does is tax, which is a burden to business. The county provides regulations, which is also a burden or a hidden tax to business. So we need to be very much aware that, as a county, we can encourage, but we don't create the jobs. The businesses create the jobs. And I heard a gentleman the other day say, "You know, I live in one of the greatest cities here in Auburn, because they just stay out of my way." How about that? How about we just stay out of businesses' way?
Do you have a final word on that topic?
I think we're doing a great job in allowing businesses to come in. They have to go through the process. We have to have a planning process. As long as they've worked through the rules, if they have an issue, they can always call their county supervisor. I'm glad to help them, and I've done that several times. To get to the bottom of an issue that a developer or a business owner has with the county, that's my job, to help them work through those problems, and that's what I've been doing.
Recently, Placer County commissioned an MSR on fire services. This review showed that many small districts are in dire straits. What do you see as a solution to the funding shortfall for these districts?
First of all, the MSR was done by Placer County LAPCO Agency. They're the ones that any annexations or any changes have to go through them. So that's a, about every five years, LAPCO has to go through municipal service reviews. This municipal service review came back, it didn't tell me anything I didn't know already. But what I've done is put a, the county has funded a sustainability study with City Gate to look at all the issues that the smaller independent fire districts have. And finally, the Board of Supervisors is engaged with that, and we are working toward a solution, working with the six fire districts that are having financial difficulties. We're working together with them. I show up at their meetings. I've talked to their chiefs all the time. We're finally have a plan in place, and this is the first time the county government has been engaged in solving the dilemma of fire districts.
It's interesting, Jim says it's the first time, when we know that Penrind and Newcastle have been struggling for a long period of time. City Gate is another study. County loves to do studies, spend $100,000 here, $100,000 there, when we, when we really don't need all of that research done by an outside consulting source. We know what needs to be done. The fire districts are struggling. I have met with them as well. And the study includes information that the county supervisors wanted in there, because they wanted to have something to hide behind and say, "See, this is what we've got to do." I think they ought to have the courage enough to say, "Here's what we ought to do," and just lay it out there and do it themselves. Now, with that aside, I think Prop 174 funding, 172 funding, sorry, needs to be shared among the fire district. It has not been at this point. There needs to be a pool. County drops money in, fire district decides how it's spent.
You can start a pool, and you can give money to the fire districts, but who's accountable? The Board of Supervisors is not accountable.
Now, with that aside, I think Prop 174 funding, 172 funding, sorry, needs to be shared among the fire district. It has not been at this point. There needs to be a pool. County drops money in, fire district decides how it's spent.
You can start a pool and you can give money to the fire districts, but who's accountable? The Board of Supervisors is not accountable for that funding if you give it to the fire districts. We need to work with them and make sure that their financial program is in place that makes sense. And then we can work with each of them and find a solution. Doesn't mean the county's not going to contribute. We've already contributed a lot of time and $100,000 for this study. Again...
I think accountability is an important issue here. But the accountability happens at the fire board level. Those are elected officials that manage the budgets for each of those fire departments. Now, you have those elected officials coming together to manage that pool of funds. We already know that there's a surplus in those funds. There was last year, there's going to be a bigger surplus this year. And yet the county is still holding those funds back in reserve without offering any assistance.
Now I'm going to combine two questions. Okay. About the Auburn Airport, here's the first part of the question. Now Auburn is currently updating the airport master plan. Do you support the plan to extend the runway to open the airport to larger planes and greater commerce? And I'll throw onto that question, what do you see as the way to improve relationship between the city of Auburn and the county of Placer?
First of all, I haven't seen the master plan. I think it's a work in progress, so I really can't comment on that until I see it. I can't say whether I support it or not. And it's the second question. I really have no problem with the city of Auburn. I don't see where there's this relationship level. I show up here all the time. I'm here at these meetings. I meet with our public work director, has a good relationship with the city's public work director. Our CEO has meetings with the county, with the city manager. I'm around, I'm involved in community events. And so I don't see an issue with the city, between the city and the county that we can't work out. I'm meeting with two council members every month or every two months. I see people on the street, I talk to the electives when I'm involved in the community. And so I don't really see an issue with the city and the county as far as the airport.
The Auburn Airport is one of our jewels that we have. And I've appreciated the airport for a long time and a lot of people that are involved in committees and groups there. I think extending the runway is an excellent opportunity to make that jewel shine a little bit brighter. Yes, we do need to collaborate and work with the city of Auburn, Placer County, city of Auburn, working together well. I took my grandson out to the airport and he enjoyed watching the planes come and go and helicopters and that kind of thing. The key is, that has so much opportunity for growing additional businesses, adding new high-tech jobs out there. And by doing the improvements that they're talking about, which is not new, they've been talking about those things for a long time. And there's challenges with that and we can talk about that later in detail. But I think the opportunity there with that airport to grow it, make it better, bring in new economic growth is a wonderful thing to do.
It's not in the best interest of Placer County to hinder the development of the airport. The airport is a jewel that needs to be shined. Supervisor Montgomery, who represents that area, is working with Councilmember Powers, working on economic development co-equally. Anything that happens in the airport area that brings jobs is going to help the county. And anything that happens in North Auburn is going to help the city because people will move here, they'll see shopping and all that.
I'm glad Jim agrees with me and I'm glad he thinks it's the jewel that I described it earlier. I think that's a good thing, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, this falls in the category, "When did you stop beating your wife?" counselor. The Board of Supervisors promoted a measure to increase their pay two years ago. Since then, Placer County has looked to close libraries and increase sales taxes. Board of Supervisors in counties with less than $700,000 in population are considered part-time supervisors. Do you think it was a mistake to increase Board of Supervisors' pay? Mr. Gregus?
Yes. I ran for this position when it was paying 35 part-time and I agree that that's a reasonable approach to be a part-time supervisor. Let's take a look at the whole situation in general. You have the opportunity to vote come May, June for a supervisor. I also believe you have the opportunity to run for office. And everyone here, as part of their civic duty, should be looking at that. If we were to do that, then we would not see the kinds of challenges that we're seeing in government that we have today. I think pay for a position is reasonable, but it shouldn't be your only job. I shouldn't be here saying, "You know what? If I get this job, I'm going to quit my other one." No. I'm going to have my other businesses, I'm going to have my other investments. I will commit full-time to good governance at Placer County, but I'm not doing it for the funds. I am doing it because I look at it for me as a public service. And I hope somebody else that comes out for me will have the same view and same approach.
Since the pay of the county supervisors was stopped at $30,000 a year with no benefits, the population of Placer County has grown by more than 200,000 people. Governance is very complex. It's gotten more complex over the years with the state and federal regulations that we have to manage, that we have to comply with. I represent 70,000 people. I am in my office at least eight hours a day, sometimes more. I left my office last night at 8:00. I work hard. It takes, it's a full-time job in order to understand all the issues and decisions that we have to make. I had a part-time job with the Placer County Office of Education when, before the salary increase went in. That took up all my weekends and it took up many, much of my time during my office.
If you elect me, I will represent every member of Placer County, not just those in District 3, because that is the responsibility of the supervisor. There are a lot of issues and we understand that. I am willing to take those on. It's a continual learning, lifelong learning process. I don't see it stopping here. And yes, there is going to be a lot of work and a lot of prep. That's okay. That's part of why there should be a give-back and not a profession where you go and you spend X number of years here or somewhere else.
You know, I spent 30 years working as an animal repair owner and operator. I worked hard and I still work hard. To say that I'm a professional politician is a bunch of BS. I've served on the Fire District Board for 16 years for $50 a month. I served on the Auburn Union Elementary School District Board at no pay for eight years. And I've served on the Board of Supervisors for almost 12 years for $30,000 a year.
Biomedical, biomass, and technology are high-growth sectors. What specifically will you do to attract these businesses to the district?
Yeah, we're working on a biomass facility up in the Tahoe area. It's going to create energy that we can sell to hopefully liberty energy who provides the service up there. We have a 30-mile radius staked out where we will bring in all the forest waste into that facility, chip it, and clean the forest for those kinds of... So we lessen the impact of catastrophic wildfire that we're going to have time and time again. So that's what we're doing as far as biomass utilization. It's been an ongoing process and we're very close to coming to a public-private partnership with a company that has done these in Europe. As far as biotech, that's part of what we need to do with bringing a four-year university to Placer County. We need to have locally four-year universities so we can...
Biomass doesn't work. Ask Lassen County. I believe they have three units up there that are more than willing to give us if we just haul them away. The problem is related to the cost of fuel. And after a certain price point on the fuel, and I'm not going to go into all the details, it just doesn't, it's not economically feasible. So we're throwing good dollars after bad that could be used for something else. Let's let the professional forest management people into our forests to do their job. They know what they're doing. We don't want government in the forest trying to manage a forest. It's not what they do best. Government is what they do best. Let's let the professional foresters do that. In terms of four-year schools, I believe there is one in Rockland already. William Jessup, is that right? Yeah, okay. So we do have at least one. Could we use more? I agree. The high-tech sector is very exciting. I spent over 20 years in that field myself.
The biomass project up in the Tahoe region is more than just energy. It creates, it helps us with our catastrophic wildfire by cleaning the forest waste out. When the fires burn and the Forest Service burns those piles, you get air pollution. You also get erosion in the watershed. And private government, private businesses that own forests manage their forests. Forest Service has not been doing that.
To the person who wrote this question, we don't, we're not addressing questions to specific candidates, so I'm going to rephrase a little bit. It's been mentioned that the government's role is to stay out of the way of business. I'm sorry, did I miss you again?
I don't think that it's not because he likes me or not. I don't think that... You're just excited to get to the next question. I'm not a professional forestry management. I had some forestry training. And the key is, there are professionals that manage forests well. Let's let them do that job. Let's not let government get actively involved in another area that they don't belong in. Give it to the professionals, let it be done competitively. Jim's right and wrong on the erosion and the fire issues. And we just don't have time to go into all the details on it. The point being is Tahoe has a lot of problems with fire.
So it was mentioned that the government's role is to stay out of the way of business. What specifically is Placer County doing or could it be doing to enable business growth?
My area of expertise is in construction. And I have seen the rules and regulations over the last 15, 20 years just off the charts. They talk about affordable housing and yet they do regulations, for example, like this one. We want affordable housing, yet here's the new energy code and here's the new electrical code. One of those electrical sockets used to be a quarter. They now have a new code requirement that drives those things to two bucks apiece. So you start multiplying that out and it just, it's intrusive. It comes to the point where you're saying, "Hey, how can we even afford to have our children afford homes if we continue along this path of regulations?" Now, we all, I agree, safety's paramount, but at what point do we say, "Enough? Stop? This battleship is going in this direction. We need to turn it. We need to control it, slow it down, stop it, and turn it." And it's not going to happen in just one year.
Well, most of those regulations are for the safety of the public. Electrical outlets, there's new demands on energy with your computer systems in your homes and these new television systems. And so those electrical outlets need to be safe. That's where fires start. That's part of the problem with the fire districts is that now houses are more safe. They're built with construction that have more safe things that don't allow fires. And now the fire districts are doing more of their response on accidents and safety issues, not fires. And so we do everything we can to encourage people to develop, but we try not to put too many burdens on them. But they still have to comply with state law.
You can't regulate waste stupidity. People will find a way to do something stupid. The electrical issue with the socket is not around fire, it's around electrical shop. Okay? So let's be clear as to what that is. I agree, we need to have safe issues. The problem is, is we're taking these regulations too far and we need to stop. That is an added cost to this whole thing that's hidden, that people don't normally think about. You think, "Oh, I'm buying a home." You don't realize all the things that the builder had to do to meet new codes, new regulations, new requirements that just drive me crazy. I apologize. Get excited about this stuff.
All those regulations are in place to promote safety in the home. The greatest threat to the county is being, having a sustainable budget and having a budget that, with ongoing programs that are sustainable. So we have to manage our funding. We have to invest in our other post-employment retirement, healthcare benefits wisely, and also in our pension obligations. And that's what we've been doing over these past several years. We're investing in putting money aside to take care of those requirements to meet the healthcare obligations of our retirees, of our employees, and also the pension obligations of our employees. That's the greatest threat.
I think the greatest threat to the county, other than me, is the state of California. And a classic example is PERS, which is the retirement program. It used to have like 300 and some million, it's now close to a half a million dollars in debt. Yes, the county is putting money aside, good plan. But PERS has a new policy that says, "We're not going to give you the best ROI. We're going to pursue political goals and agenda." Now, when I invest and when you invest, you look for a place where you're going to get good return on investment. PERS does not have that as a stated objective anymore. In fact, they've said that that will be not a priority for them. So they're not going to give us a good return. So we need to get out of PERS and we need to look at what we can do to minimize the impact of the state of California on Placer County. And if you understand the transportation, all the other issues, there, everything that we do, we need to push back. And I think Jefferson's the way to do it.
The discount rate that we're getting on our CalPERS trust account is more than 6%, almost 7%. And so that money is going to be reinvested over time and that's going to give us the plan to fund our healthcare benefits for retirees forever. And also we're working on that same way with the same type of deal with CalPERS or maybe a separate organization to do that for our pension obligations.
PERS originally had a target of 7% as well. And Jim's talking about the money the county's put away, so let's make sure we know there's two different accounts here. Right, Jim? Thank you. So PERS is now purveying less than 3% on their... We're going deeper in the hole every dollar we give to PERS. So this is not a healthy or a sustainable environment.
Thank you all. We're going to now go to our one-minute closing statement. Mr. Gregus, you're first.
Thank you very much for coming today. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you my vision of what good governance is. Hopefully you understand the difference in core principles about how governments should work and the difference between Jim and myself. And this will allow you to make a wise decision for yourselves as to the direction you want Placer County to go. Again, I would appreciate your vote. Name's Robert Gregus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to thank you for showing up today. There's a saying that things get done by the people who show up. Now, we did a lot of things with Project Auburn. People showed up and contributed. The State Theater has done a marvelous job being remodeled by people that show up. For more than 30 years, I've been showing up. I show up anywhere and all the time, not just when I'm running for office. I have proven to be approachable and assessable. That's how I build relationships, by showing up. I contribute my time and my money to community events. I explain my decisions to people even if they do not agree with me. So now I ask you to send me back to the Board of Supervisors so I can continue showing up and so I continue my tradition of public service. Thank you for your kind attention.